Our ballots. Jo Dean will go first, followed by Kathy Keller Jones, then Lori Sherburne, then Tim Dearden, and then Tony Fuentes. We will alternate which candidate answers first, and I will repeat the question to each candidate. We will have a timekeeper visual to all participants. The timekeeper screen will go yellow when there is 15 seconds remaining, and it will go red when time is up. If necessary, I will interrupt a candidate to complete their sentence and discontinue their answer once the allotted time has been exceeded. So that we can all focus on the candidates during the forum, the chat function has been disabled, and we ask all viewers to remain muted. If you have any questions, please email the League of Women Voters at the address on your screen, l w v k s at l w v w a dot org. This forum is an opportunity for these candidates to present their views and positions so that you, the voter, can make an informed decision when you mark your ballot. Please make sure that you are registered to vote. You can do that online at vote four one one dot org or at an elections office near you. And now to get into the forum, my name is Tammy Kaufman, and I will be tonight's moderator. I want to welcome all of our candidates this evening.
Hey.
Hi.
Welcome, everyone.
Welcome. We have Jo Dean, Kathy Keller Jones, Lori Sherburne, Tim Dearden, and Tony Fuentes. The candidates received the ground rules for tonight's forum in advance and have agreed to abide by them. And now we will hear from the candidates for a 90 second introduction. Mr. Dean, will you please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are running for office?
Oh goodness. Thank you. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Joe Dean. I am running for office. I've been a school board member for about seven years now. I've been active in the community since I moved here about 16 years ago. I started out with Trout Lake Youth Athletic Association when my kids were very little. And through that, I was recruited for the school board from people that thought it was a good fit for me, which I appreciate. Man, oh, I want to tell you about some strengths and weaknesses of mine on the board. My strengths are in the facilities and the financial piece. I'm not so good in the curriculum and those types of pieces. I've been on many levy committees, or excuse me, but I've been on many hiring committees. I've been on the last levy committee. And I guess that's it. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. And now we'll move to Ms. Keller Jones. Please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are running for office.
Okay. Hi, my name is Kathy Keller Jones, and I have a background in psychology, an MA in developmental and educational psychology. For two decades, we've lived here in Trout Lake because we have grandchildren here, and one of them is going to Trout Lake School for about six years. And before that, we lived in Portland, and I was a, for two decades, I was a counselor in Portland Public Schools, kindergarten through eighth grade counselor. I came in in the early end when we were being taught to be preventative counselors. We taught in the classroom. A lot of the things that the kids are getting in second step right now were the kinds of things that we were teaching in person. We also, of course, were working with individual kids who were stressed, kids groups, principals, teachers, and parents. I was all together in six different schools, and my last school was the Sunnyside Environmental School, which is a K through eight school. And I love that that model where you have more grades in one school. It was a really lovely school to be at. After retirement, I kept teaching parenting classes, and I helped write three books on parenting with a local pediatrician. The last one was called Face to Face and was really about how do we parent in this digital age, which is much more complicated. I've been on two different boards, and so I have a lot of board experience as well.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Keller Jones. Now, Ms. Sherburne, please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are running for office.
Good evening. I'm Lori Sherburne. Most of you probably know me. I've been in Trout Lake for a number of years. We moved here when my oldest son was five years old, and the school didn't even have a kindergarten, so that was a while ago. After we kind of settled in, I started volunteering at the school, then pretty soon I was asked to work as an aide, which I did in special education, and decided I did truly want to pursue a career in teaching. So I returned to Portland State University and worked part-time to get my degree. After I got my certificate, I was hired as the, for a teaching position. And I've taught kindergarten, or not kindergarten, I think, art third through 12th grade, mostly language arts, senior projects, home ec for several years. I have been the NHS advisor. I've had 31 Destination Imagination teams that I've coached. I've been a class advisor. And several years ago, when the 21st Century Grants were available, Trout Lake had a 21st Century Grant, and we established a after-school program for tutoring and crafts, different kinds of activities. And at that time, we also
Wrap up, please.
I would like to serve on the board. I've wanted to do that in retirement, and this is my time.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Dearden, thank you for joining us by phone this evening, and we know your connection has been a challenge, but please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are running for office.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Tim Dearden, and sorry, everyone, I don't have video. I have experienced some technical difficulties here, but hopefully you can hear me okay. So as I think most people in general in Trout Lake know me, I've been a part of the community a long time. I grew up here in Trout Lake. I went to Trout Lake School every year, and I graduated from the school in 2007. And then I did, I did go off to college for four years, and then when I graduated with a mechanical engineering degree, I came back and was lucky enough to get a job here in the gorge and moved back to Trout Lake. So I was very fortunate in that. I've always really enjoyed hearing about the school, even in my short time away, and knowing what's going on there. And over the years, the school and the district as a whole has given a lot to me and really made me who I am today. So, you know, serving on the board is a great way to give back to that, the school. And right now, I'm currently on the school board. I've been on for about eight months. I was appointed this February in place of Carl Alloway, and would love to continue if voted back in. But yeah, I really just would like to give back, and I feel like I really know the heart of this community and the district well, since I have lived here pretty much my whole life.
Thank you, Mr. Dearden. Mr. Fuentes, please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are running for office.
My name is Tony Fuentes. I have lived here in Trout Lake for about nine years. And I have children in school at present, have two boys, and then obviously I have my daughter graduated a couple of years ago. My desire to be part of the school board is basically because I think it's a very important position within the community. The school board is really the only elected officials who have any kind of say in the district, as well as kind of helping with the overall operations. Overall, I kind of feel like there needs to be more direct outreach to the community with regards to setting goals and establishing partnerships for the school's future. There's a variety of challenges that we're facing. One, of course, is just its overall fiscal sustainability, given changes in the levy laws and otherwise, as well as things that are more immediate, such as the pandemic. So these are things that I feel like I'd be qualified to be able to support and help us move forward on. But I think one of the biggest things is that I think it's important that the community be engaged in the board. My decision to participate in this election, and specifically to take part in this particular position is because, as Tim noted, he was appointed eight months ago, and I think it's important that the community also has a say in terms of who's going to be serving on the board. So I, since I put my hat in for appointment, I figured I should put my hat in for election as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. And now we will move on to our questions. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to answer each question. So for our first question this evening, what do you see as the major challenges facing the Trout Lake School District in the coming years? We'll begin with Ms. Keller Jones.
Well, obviously, there's a challenge right now of COVID and Delta, but I'm going to leave that up to the health experts. And I believe the school is doing everything they can in this direction. So my other challenge, challenges, right? My other thought is that we really need to, we need to infuse the curriculum with the skills that are really going to protect kids and enable them to have resilience for the, what's coming, what's coming ahead. And that means with the, all the kids having digital citizenship skills, with the older kids really understanding digital media literacy and helping them to, with their mental health and their balance with digital devices. So that's one of our main challenges, I think, to infuse that into the curriculum.
Thank you, Ms. Keller Jones. Ms. Sherburne, we'll move to you. What do you see as the major challenges facing the Trout Lake School District in the coming years? And you will need to unmute yourself, please.
Sorry about that.
I just joined.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. We will be with you shortly.
I think one of the major challenges is going to be more reaching out to the kids, not, it's a challenge not to know exactly what the demands are going to be, and I think the demands for our kids are going to be more expanded. They're going to be expected to be able to use technology professionally. I know a lot of them use technology, but not in a business-type manner. And technology is going to be expanded in everything from automobile mechanics, you know, to everything they do. So I think that's going to be a challenge. I think the school is going to, it's a small school, so it will need to expand its programs. But I don't think that it should expand beyond the point that we have a real focus on the basic education skills that kids need. You need to teach those reading, writing, communication skills, personal skills.
If you could wrap up, please.
In order for that, to make lifelong learners out of our kids.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sherburne. And now we'll move to Mr. Dearden. What do you see as the major challenges facing the Trout Lake School District in the coming years?
Thank you. Well, obviously, you know, one of the major challenges we've been facing recently has been COVID. I think that's, I think that's been affecting pretty much every facet of the school. And Trout Lake has always been a place that I felt has been very unified, and I feel like the, a challenge, challenge, which has been a challenge in moving forward, is also going to be a challenge, is recreating that sense of unity among the staff, the teachers, the students, and also the community as a whole. And I feel like a big part of that's going to be people maybe putting aside maybe some of their personal beliefs and and really focusing on the fundamentals, which is the schools are really for the kids and the school is owned by the community. And I think that if we can do that, it'll be a lot smoother in the, in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Dearden. And now we'll move to Mr. Fuentes. What do you see as the major challenges facing the Trout Lake School District in the coming years?
Well, first of all, I want to echo what Tim just said, which is the, moving through the pandemic is one of the biggest things, well, is the number one thing that's kind of facing us, and I think that Tim was very wise in pointing out that one of the biggest challenges is not so much the ins and outs and logistics, but also ensuring that the community kind of is able to coalesce around supporting the students and being able to move forward past this. Moving on beyond that, though, there's two things that have always stuck out for me. One, as I noted earlier, is kind of the overall fiscal sustainability of the school. I don't feel like we're doing a very good job of our asset management and planning for the future. It feels very trying to go levy to levy. And the new school is actually not that new anymore, so we're going to have some big repairs in the future that we need to plan for. So that's one big thing. And then the other thing that has stuck out for me is honestly the transition from high school into work or higher ed. I think we've done a great job providing students an opportunity to move on to higher education, but I see too many students kind of coming back, and so I want to see other opportunities.
Mr. Fuentes.
Very people. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Dean, for joining us back again. Good to see you. We are starting with, what do you see as the major challenges facing the Trout Lake School District in the coming years? We'll give him just a moment as he's connecting to audio. Mr. Dean, you're good if you would unmute.
Okay, I'm here. Okay, so I caught about, yeah, I've been gone for eight minutes now, so. You're going to ask me a question, and I'm going to answer it because I didn't hear the question.
Not a problem. We'll do that.
Okay.
What do you see as the major challenges facing the Trout Lake School District in the coming years?
Okay, the, the very first order of business is get back to a, as close as we can to a pre-pandemic form of school. It was, that was better education than we have right now across the board. And we got to get there, or we got to figure out how to adjust to get the quality of education back up. The next thing we need to do is the, the future is now, we are behind the curve of making room in our building for expanding our, the amount of students we can handle effectively. That's infrastructure building. We're behind it. We've talked about it a lot, but a thing called a pandemic has hit, and it has definitely mothballed that.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. We're glad that you were able to join us back. And thank you all for adhering to your 60 seconds for each of your questions. We'll move on to our next question and begin with Ms. Sherburne. What is your vision for education in this community?
My vision for education in this community? I, I have a great deal of respect for the school and the way that it's been run. I have three children that have gone through Trout Lake School. And they have all come out with a good, basic education. They've gone in different career routes, which has taught me a lot, both, you know, in my teaching and the manner in which I teach, stopped me to appreciate different ways of learning. And I would hope that the school would continue in that direction, reaching out to kids with different modes of learning. I forgot the question again.
The question was about your vision for education.
My vision. Thank you. My vision would be to continue in that way and to strengthen our ways of reaching students.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sherburne. And now we'll move to Mr. Dearden. What is your vision for education in this community?
Thank you. Yeah, like Lori said, I, I think that the school is really strong in terms of the education. I feel like I got a great education when I went through school there. But I, I think that we just need to make sure we keep on aligning our education with the district's mission statements and operating principles that are set forward. I think those are really strong, and the goal is for the students, teachers, and staff, and the parents in the community to work together to support the educational process. Every, everyone's involved. It's not just the teachers. It's not just the students. It's a, it's a community effort to get students through. So I think that's super important moving forward. You know, making, making, making it an entire process for everyone is involved. And I also think that Trout Lake has always been really good at getting people to, to that four-year degree. But a lot of kids may not, that might not be the right path for them, and so getting them maybe more hooked up with some sort of other, other programs, alternative programs, maybe supporting them better in that way could also be better moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on. And so what is your vision for education in this community, Mr. Fuentes?
So to echo what we heard from Lori and others, I have children in the school district. I have one who's graduated, honestly. I think there's a lot of great things happening in the school. However, as I noted earlier, one of the things, one of my visions for education here is to better prepare our students for the transition from high school to higher education or work. And to that, what I'm saying, I've been here about nine years, and we've done a great job of getting kids graduated and celebrating, celebrating them when they do so, and be able to provide them with opportunities to go to higher ed. But I've seen too many of those children honestly bounce back. And going to college and then not completing it is a very expensive outcome, and it's not an outcome that's built on success. And so I would like to see kind of a wider view what it means to be successful after high school, as well as to look at opportunities to better support those students who are college-bound. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. Mr. Dean, what is your vision for education in the community?
Okay, since I've been on the board, we've done, we've, we've tried our darndest to get some voc ed in the school. There is a, there's a huge lack of technical skilled people in the workforce right now. That piece we need to continue to focus on and try to, to try to get it out there. It's a very difficult thing to do that I have found out as my year, years on the school board. That, that better prepare the college-bound kids so they don't come back. Like Tony said, that if that's what they're focused on, that they can continue to do that. And a thing that I'm beginning to understand now is the mental health around social media is something that's not, that I don't think is in curriculum. I'm weak on curriculum, but I don't think it's there, and it needs focus on.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Ms. Keller Jones, what is your vision for education in this community?
Well, I'm also on the mental health and resilience page. I think this school is a wonderful system with enough kids that everybody can be known. But right now, they've been out of school for a long period of time. They've been often obsessed with their devices because, you know, you've got to make connection. And now, and now kids need to really understand that the relationship between device use, how much you're using your device and your mental health. And therefore, how do you live a balanced life in this age? And how do you, how do you maintain your hope and resilience even when you're getting all these negative messages? So I would, of course, I'm, I really am for face-to-face education and for all the good things that are being done at Trout Lake School now, and I think there needs to be more to really help kids to be ready for the real world out there, given the circumstances.
Thank you, Ms. Keller Jones. Moving to our next question, we'll begin with Mr. Dearden. Is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the school board? Mr. Dearden, if you will, unmute.
Yeah, oh, sorry. Yeah, I think, I think my motivation comes from just really, really wanting to see the district succeed as a whole. And I have a lot invested in this community and in the school. I mean, like I said earlier, it's given me a lot and made me who I am today, and I'm really, I really, really want to see it succeed, and I think, I think, I, I think I have a, I have a pretty good idea of how to do that, just because I've been here for so long, and I think that's one of my main motivations. I also am motivated because I have kids going to the school. And so I have one kid in kindergarten and a couple coming up. And yeah, that's just a big motivator for me, and just seeing, seeing them getting good, good education is a big motivator.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Mr. Fuentes, is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the school board?
I, I think there's two. One is the overall fiscal sustainability of the school. Again, with the changes in the levy law and so forth, I feel like there needs to be more focus on our asset management planning, as well as our long-term planning around ensuring that we're ready for the future and don't find ourselves in a position where we need to replace a roof or some other big thing, and we're just not prepared for it. So that's kind of the, the building, if you will. But the other part, as I've noted a couple of times, is kind of helping with a more successful transition from high school into the world of work or higher, higher education. And in both of these, I think there's really a need to kind of invest the community in these longer views of what it means for the school to be successful financially, kind of a long view, as well as for the the success of our students, looking at a longer view beyond high school, preparing them for the future, and looking at different avenues that are available. So those are really the big things that motivate me.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. Mr. Dean, is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the school board?
Wow, a particular issue. It's, it's, no, there is not a particular issue. We deal with a lot of things on the school board, and they're all important. I don't think I can choose just one. My, when I started on the school board, I was asked to join to finish out a term. I wasn't in love with the idea. I've grown through a lot of mentorship through people like Carl Alloway, Ken Baloo, all my board members, Camden and Brendan, and that has really created a passion for me to continue to do that and take care of all of the things in the school that need to be taken care of.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Ms. Keller Jones, is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the school board?
Well, I will say that I started, the idea germinated because I was teaching classes and discussion groups for parents about parenting in the digital age and the challenges parents have. Well, those parents then asked me if I would like to run for the school board, which also, in that context, I understood how much they wanted to have a voice in what's going on in the school, and, and that Trout Lake is just filled with these wonderful, you know, parents who care so deeply. And so I will say that one thing that I'm, that's really of interest to me is to have a PTO or some kind of parent advisory group or a site council, whatever form it takes. I've, I've actually never been at a school that didn't have a PTO or a PTA, we used to call them. And so, and that president of that group was really part of the board. And so I would like to see more of that going on.
Thank you, Ms. Keller Jones. Ms. Sherburne, is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the school board?
Well, I believe strongly in the small school that we have here. I think it's a wonderful opportunity. I think it's a wonderful way for our children to get their education. I also believe strongly in public schools. I think meeting with the different people, different backgrounds, different beliefs, I think it's, it's a great way for kids to learn and to understand where people come from. So I really want our school to succeed. I feel I have a knowledge of curriculum and my background in education can help sustain that process. And I want this education system to work for our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Sherburne. We'll move on to our next question. And we'll begin with Mr. Fuentes. As a school board member, in what areas of the budget would you consider making cuts if necessary? What budget items would you protect from proposed cuts?
That's a great question, and honestly, it's one I haven't considered up until this point. It's hard to think about cutting anything, quite honestly, from our existing budget, because everything that's kind of happening, at least with regards to services to the students, is kind of creating an overall balance. So I can't look at, say, sports and say, well, sports aren't important. I can't look at music and arts and say, that's not important. I can't look at music and arts and say, that's not important. I think all these things are important. So it's hard, it'd be hard to kind of come up with a single thing that would need to be adjusted in order to support whatever our pocketbook happens to be. I think it would have to be a broader view and unfortunately, it'd have to be that kind of happy, unhappy medium of what it may be. The second, I'm sorry, I can't remember the second part of the question.
What budget items would you protect from?
Oh, okay. Protecting honestly would be the core education, which is supposed to be funded by the state. But that's, you know, that's neither here nor there. That's just what it is.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. Mr. Dean, as a school board member, in what areas of the budget would you consider making cuts if necessary? And what budget items would you protect from proposed cuts?
Okay, so from my experience, we did have to cut stuff out of the budget. The, the state took money out of our levy money that we were using for certain things and reallocated it different directions. We, we cut that budget, trimmed that budget, and I don't know that anybody knew it. We, we ripped no teachers. There were no extracurricular activities that were shortened. That was hundreds of thousands of dollars over a couple of years. What would I protect? Everything that we protected. We, we, we did it. We protected it. I don't think anybody knew it. And I hope it never gets that bad again.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. And Ms. Keller Jones, as a school board member, in what areas of the budget would you consider making cuts if necessary? And what budget items would you protect from proposed cuts?
Well, I obviously think it's very important to protect the staff. And the variety of activities that the school offers is really quite wonderful. So it would be a shame to lose any of those. I kind of like Joe's surreptitious trimming here and there. That seems like the way to go, to spread it out and, and try to do it in a way that doesn't actually cut. I know I went through a lot of this in Portland Public Schools. And it was painful. And, you know, if you're a counselor and they have to cut, you know, you may be the person, they're going to slice you down a little bit. And I once had the, the school neighborhood, you know, raise money to keep me at whatever percentage I was at. It's, so hopefully we won't have to do a lot of cuts. We'll be able to do it surreptitiously if we do.
Thank you, Ms. Keller Jones. Ms. Sherburne, as a school board member, in what areas of the budget would you consider making cuts if necessary? And what budget items would you protect from proposed cuts?
Well, let's do the protection part first. I, I would not cut from the core curriculum. And I think every employee at the school is a teacher. And I would not want to see any of those people cut back at all. I think it would have to be looking at the budget and I like what Joe said, you know, little bit here and a little bit there, and hopefully find some balance. I, I think that would be another area when you have to start making cuts is maybe to bring, have a PTO that would come in and help subsidize those kinds of things. As an art teacher, I would not want to see art, you know, cut back or the music. And as a teacher, I also know that we have worked hard to incorporate, you know, reading art through and reading together, history and art together. And so sometimes you can combine some of those things. Those are tough decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, for your job of not letting us know what you had cut.
I will move to Mr. Dearden. Mr. Dearden, as a school board member, in what areas of the budget would you consider making cuts if necessary? And what budget items would you protect from proposed cuts?
Yeah, I mean, I obviously, I like what everyone else said, but the, I think, I think it's just, I think when, when, if, if that ever came up, which obviously we hope it doesn't, but you just have to remember, go back to the basics again, remember why, why this school is there. It's really for the kids. And so you would not want, and it's for their education and they need to be safe there. So anything that jeopardizes those things, you don't want to cut, you want to keep those things in place. So I mean, if it really came down to it, I think that you, you may have to start cutting some of the extracurricular stuff that, that does not jeopardize that core, those core fundamentals of the school. And, you know, giving the kids the best education they can. I think Trout Lake is in a good position though, just because everyone on the staff, from my experience, can do so many different things and is able to jump in in different places if needed be. And I, I think that happens every year at Trout Lake School. I think they will probably, even without budget cuts, continue to make that happen in the future.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to our next question and we'll begin with Mr. Dean. What kind of relationship should the school district and the school board have with its community? And what can you do as a board member to foster that relationship?
Well, this is one of my favorites. So the whole time I've been there, the, the, I, I have been a proponent of making the school the center of this community. We don't have a community center. The Grange is kind of, you know, inactive, not big enough for a lot of things. I, we do everything we can to open it up to as many outside people, groups, sports. We had art festival there for a while. Man, I, I can't, I don't know what else has been. We've had funerals there for people that wanted to have, I guess not funerals, services. We, we want to keep it open like that because it's, I, I want it to be the center of the community. I'm going to use my last eight seconds and say, we didn't do any of that budget stuff without the amazing admin and business manager and the people in our school. Thank you, Lori, but the, the school board has great people behind it.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. And we'll move to Ms. Keller Jones. What kind of relationship should the school district and the school board have with its community? And what can you do as a board member to foster that relationship?
Well, as I said, I would like to encourage the board, if I were on the board, to have a PTO or some similar organization. Right there, you're going to be opening lines of communication. And, and that's going to make a difference, right? Parents won't feel alienated or not listened to. Well, they'll feel it much less, right? And they'll be, and there's also a, I think that it also makes total sense to have parenting classes. I think that Will has started that. I was supposed to be one of them, but COVID hit right at that moment. In fact, Will and I were trying to bring Screenagers to, which is a movie that's very fascinating on how screens are affecting, especially teens. But when you're watching it as an adult, you're also going to be learning something. But to the whole community to understand what's changing in our culture around screens. And we had it, we, we raised the money, we were all set and whammo, COVID. So that's, those are some of my ideas.
Thank you, Ms. Keller Jones. Ms. Sherburne, what kind of relationship should the district and the school board have with its community? And what can you do as a board member to foster that relationship?
I think that's a very important relationship to have. I think it's important that parents feel that they can come and interact, address the board. And I think it's really important for the board to have the opportunity to hear what parents have to say. In this particular time, we have lots of different opinions about things. And in some of those cases, the board is the one that needs to make the final decision. So the board needs to hear from parents, what's important to them. The board needs to listen to professionals and they need to evaluate best practices. The, the school is the center of this small community and that's been discussed multiple times. And in, in areas around here as well, not just our community, but so much of the activities that take place at the school, the sports and all of that draw the people from the community to the school. So it's important to have a positive working relationship with those people, with people of the community. And I think inviting them in to hear from them is important.
Thank you, Ms. Sherburne. We'll move to Mr. Dearden. What kind of relationship should the district and the school board have with its community? And what can you do as a school board member to foster that relationship?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the school definitely, in a small town like Trout Lake, is, is the center of where things happen. And I can definitely attest to that. As far as the relationship is concerned, obviously, we try to make it as, as positive as possible. And I think a big part of that is, is the communication aspect. I think it's, it's really important that the relationship is more of like a mutual understanding through which the, the community and the school and the staff and the board can kind of link together and, and move forward to kind of achieve the overall goal, which is, is really getting the kids the better education. And I think that's really important. And I, yeah, just, just the quality of the education for the kids and the, and the mutual understanding that the district has with the, with the rest of the community.
Thank you, Mr. Dearden. Mr. Fuentes, what kind of relationship should the district and the school board have with the community? And what can you do as a board member to foster that relationship?
I think the nature of the relationship needs to be open, transparent and collaborative. I think that's kind of one of the big things is all, you know, the school is the heart of our community. And in order to keep it that way, we have to make sure the community is actively part of its overall vision and management. With regards to getting, helping support those things, especially the collaborative part, I'd like to see more direct outreach into the community by the board. Ultimately, more kind of proactive, kind of reaching out and getting the information out to folks through other channels beyond how their kids manage right now, which is primarily on the school website. And I think with that, if there needs to be a formalized organization to help that collaboration grow, such as a PTO, that may be a good way to go about it as well. But ultimately, I think the core thing is the community needs to be actively involved in creating the vision for its school.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. For our next question, we'll begin with Ms. Keller Jones. How do you feel the district has handled the COVID-19 public health challenge? And if you would, please unmute yourself.
Thank you. Actually, I think the, the board has, and the district, has handled the challenge very well. I think it was quite remarkable last year that they were able to, you know, go into those partial in-person days, which made a lot of difference for a lot of kids and families. And there's been a lot of advanced preparation this year. I was very impressed by how the board handled, you know, the really pretty trying circumstances of listening to opinions about how things should, should happen. And, but then we're able to come forth and tell people that we have rules to, to follow in our state. And we have a health department in our state, which is telling us the procedures to use. So I think they're, I think they're really doing an excellent job.
Thank you, Ms. Keller Jones. Ms. Sherburne, how do you feel the district has handled the COVID-19 public health challenge?
I think they've done an excellent job. I, I think the teachers did a great job beginning of last year when they had to switch to online learning. And then I was so glad that the school handled the half-days and that the kids were able to do that. I think that was so important. And I really thank the school, the administration, everyone for the way that they worked with that and worked with the kids. I think it was such a benefit. I, I agree that I think the board has handled listening this year very well. I think it's very important that all parents and all community members are listened to. And we do our best to understand where they're coming from.
Thank you. Mr. Dearden, how do you feel the district has handled the COVID-19 public health challenge?
Well, I came on, like I said, back in February, you know, midway through the pandemic so far. And prior to that, I was super impressed with how the board handled it, just with getting kids back into half-days and sometime in mid-October last year, probably one of the earliest of, of anyone in Washington State would be my guess. I mean, some, some schools didn't return to in-person learning all year, I don't think. And then more recently, just, I think it's important to remember moving forward that, and I, I've had to do this myself at time in, in my short time here at the board. But just being able to put aside your, your, maybe your own personal beliefs on certain matters for the overall goal, which is trying to get the kids in education. And I think we can all agree, it's, it's better for, better to have them in-person than it is back at home. So overall, I'm really impressed with how the board has handled it.
Thank you, Mr. Dearden. Mr. Fuentes, how do you feel the district has handled the COVID-19 public health challenge?
Overall, I think the district's done a great job. I was part of the reopening committee the summer before, after we had our initial shutdown, everyone to virtual learning and it was very rough, the end of that first school year. And then I was involved in the reopening committee with a lot of members of the community, staff and otherwise. And that kind of gave me very much a view at the level of minutia and the level of decisions that had to be made and how things became a domino effect. If you move something over here, it'd affect everything else. And I think that the board and the superintendent and the district has faced basically with a series of bad choices. And they have somehow managed to thread that needle to ensure that our kids are still getting the education and the support and the socialization that they need. I know nobody is thrilled with it, but honestly, it's about as good as it could ever be. And I think they should be commended for that.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. And Mr. Dean, how do you feel the district has handled the COVID-19 public health challenge?
With a, with a lot of stress. With a, a lot of learning, a lot of understanding, a lot of listening. With, with, with an amazing team. I, that's, that's how we got through it. That's how we accomplished the team of the board, the team of the admin, the team of the teachers. The, the board didn't, you know, the board definitely didn't do this by ourselves. I, I want to note, Tony and his reopening committee, the, the plan was flawless. I in fact think, in, in fact, I voted that that reopening plan was better than the governor's plan for Trout Lake. That's, that, that's how much I believed in it because our community and the people that are in the school know us best. And I hope we, it sounds like we served them the way they wanted to be served.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Next, we'll go to Ms. Sherburne. In today's information age, much of our nonfiction informational reading is done online. This is true for students as well as for adults. So the question, what is your perspective on the role of digital literacy instruction?
I think we have to keep it focused. As teachers, they need to understand what it is that they are assigning, if that's the case. It needs to be directed. So what's the purpose? What do you want the kids to learn? Is this the best way for them to get that information? And make sure that those goals are laid out to them. What points are they to be getting from this information? Digital information can be difficult for some kids to understand clearly. So I think that needs to be laid out for them, probably with some prep work. You know, what, what is the background that they're going to be getting? And they, they need to be directed in specific ways as to what they're looking for, how they should expect to find it, and what they need to do with it.
Thank you.
What will those expectations be?
Thank you. We'll move to Mr. Dearden. What is your perspective on the role of digital literacy instruction?
I think, I think digital literacy instruction can be a pretty powerful tool if used correctly. I, I come from more of a technical background, just, just in what I've been. I, I come from more of a technical background, just, just in what I've been in my career recently and my four years at school. And I think if used properly in conjunction with more hands-on learning, can be really powerful. And it is the way that I think I learn the best and I understand the best. But yeah, I think, I think if it is focused and is done the right way, I think it can be very powerful. And I think some, I think a lot of kids are able to get a lot out of it.
Thank you, Mr. Dearden. Mr. Fuentes, what is your perspective on the role of digital literacy instruction?
I think being digital, being digitally literate is a prerequisite for actually kind of being prepared for living in this society these days. Ultimately, I mean, we had just had this, you know, outage of Facebook and WhatsApp and Instagram and honestly, productivity ground to a halt, although you'd think it would have spiked. But those tools are so important to so many businesses and everything else. And so there's kind of a need to ensure that our students, number one, know how to be able to utilize these kind of tools effectively. But secondly, and this is the thing, is the big thing, is being able to discern the nature of sources, the value of what they're reading online, as well as kind of understanding that just because it's online, not every source is the same, as well as that there's certain things, platforms such as Facebook, Instagram, and so forth, where at the end of the day, you're the commodity. And so perhaps that's not the best avenue for finding information versus entertainment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. And Mr. Dean, what is your perspective on the role of digital literacy instruction?
Wow, this is, this is not in my wheelhouse at all. So I guess, I, I guess I am going to tell you what what I I don't even, I frankly, I don't even know what the, the question refers to. It sounds like it has to do with finding information online using, using electronic tools. So if that's correct, then yes, kids need to be able to discern what they're looking at. That, how to use it, it's a, it's, it's a form of how business is done these days, their job. And man, this question's completely got me. I got no good answer for it. I, I'm drawing a blank at what it's actually asking.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. We'll move to Ms. Keller Jones. What is your perspective on the role of digital literacy instruction?
Well, I think there's different aspects. I think it's critical to kids being successful and, and becoming resilient adults and thoughtful adults. In the, in the beginning, we're talking more about just how to be a digital citizen in the sense of how to act online that works and doesn't work. We know a lot of the problems at school actually start at home when kids are online. So there's that kind of digital citizenship. As we get into adolescence, we really want kids to start to be talking about in depth and about, about the digital world and how it impacts them and how it's useful, what works, what doesn't work. And then we, and the digital literacy part is, is really important, right? The kids learn to, to detect truth from fiction. They understand how AI works and how it can work to your benefit or to your detriment. Very critical.
Thank you, Ms. Keller Jones. We've come towards the end of our evening. And so now we will take time for each candidate to have 30 seconds to close. You may also use this time to clarify anything that was said during tonight's forum. We will begin with Mr. Dearden. Mr. Dearden, you have 30 seconds. And you will need to unmute. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. Yeah, well, thanks for having me here tonight. It was great to talk, to talk through some things with everybody and hear what everybody else is thinking on certain topics. I just want to let everyone know that I, I will definitely be, if I'm re-elected, I'll be keeping, keeping in mind the basics and the fundamentals of the school, which is schools are for the kids and the school also belongs to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dearden. And now we'll go to Mr. Fuentes.
Sure. First of all, thank you so much for this opportunity. And I know there's some community participants that are tuning in. And hopefully, more people also watch the recording, because I think it's important that folks get educated on what their choices are on the ballot and, and see if they find the things that they need from the candidates. That said, speaking for myself, this is a community. It's small. If there's any clarifying questions that anybody in the community has or anything that someone wants to ask me that wasn't asked during this forum, do not hesitate. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. Next, we'll move to Mr. Dean.
All right. Thanks for this opportunity. I, I, I did my best to let the community know how I feel. I obviously showed one of my biggest weaknesses with that last question. But I, I rely on a lot of people in the school, the teachers, the staff, and parents to, to educate me on how we should guide the school. And I hope to be able to do it for four more years.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Next, we'll move to Ms. Keller Jones.
Well, thank you again, League of Women's Voters, for putting this on. What I do want to, I think our school board has been doing an excellent job. But I want you to think about this. Out of five people, wouldn't it be nice to have two women on the board? Out of five people, would it be nice to have two people who've actually had a lot of school experience from the inside? Wouldn't it be like, nice to have someone on the board who really knows the school community well and is a real, at all levels? And so thank you for voting.
Thank you, Ms. Keller Jones. And Ms. Sherburne.
Thank you very much for putting this together and allowing us to have this opportunity to address the community. I'd just like to kind of repeat a couple of things. I think that it's so important for the community to work together through the school, the efforts of the parents and people who work at the school. I just really appreciate that and think that's important. I really support expanded options for our students. What are they going to do after high school? I know that's always a big question, but I think we need to open up some more opportunities in that area. And just one last comment on, on the digital learning, it's not going to go away. And our kids need to learn how to use it in respect of.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you all. That concludes our questions for the evening. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I would like to thank all of our candidates for your participation tonight. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Tonight's recorded coverage will be available on YouTube and on the League of Women Voters Facebook page. Be sure to head to vote411.org if you need any other information. And please remember to mark your ballot and return it in time to be counted for the general election on November 2nd. Thank you all, and good night.